Welcome to Cituate planning boards here Thursday, November 1st. Here at Cituate Public Safety Complex. Are there any other issues on the agenda?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first item is a public hearing, special permit for accessory dwelling at 365 Halloway Road. If you'd like to come up. Can I tell us what you're doing on one?
Okay. My name is Deborah Lucy. I moved back to Cituate in January. I grew up in Cituate and will share it with you. I moved back to take care of my parents. My father's 91, my mother's 87. My father was at Wamper Tuck and Jenkins and Prince Will Havers for many, many years. And so I moved back and built a garage. This is Chris Alexander, he built my garage. And what I wanted to do is put a one-bedroom apartment over it with the idea that at some point I could have my parents or my two children, my two children live in that apartment.
All right. Is it done yet?
The garage is, the structure is built. Absolutely, yes. And that's, you know, all gone through the normal process and permitting and approvals and all of that. So it puts that question is your approval to build out the one-bedroom apartment over it. All right. My one, I like such apartments. I think they are beneficial to the town. It's just my opinion. However, looking at this, which I don't have a problem with, except it is one major issue that I'm seeing.
The same way in, is the same way out. We only have one entrance/exit.
No, there's two addresses.
In your apartment or in your house?
No, in the apartment.
If, there's a slide that goes down the stairs stairs off the back and there's...
But that is not shown.
So this is the sliding glass door here.
Okay.
And there's a set of stairs that goes down in that. So this is, this is the set of stairs down the back.
You have to show them. They have to be shown.
Okay.
Okay? You have to see it to believe it.
Okay.
Okay? I know. It's just because looking at this...
So can you, I didn't see what you pointed at.
Which elevation, yeah, can you kind of...
Tell us what's wrong with your eyes.
Which elevation stairs are going to be on, etc.?
It's the west elevation.
The west elevation?
The west elevation, okay.
The top to sliding glass door. It shows it with just a railing across the door at this point.
Yeah.
And we have a full set of stairs down. That's the second meeting address.
Going straight down or going off to one side?
Going towards the door that's currently there.
So it's got to go all the way across and down?
So it's gonna...
How does it go across the windows?
The stairs that come off, right here.
Right here.
Okay, Chris, you still have a question about, see, the stairs, they don't cross them in this.
They have to.
They have to.
They have to.
In what way do you think?
So this, this window here doesn't exist.
Okay. All right. Here's the thing. You need an update if you want to. We do, I think, have to.
Okay.
Okay? Um, Bobo will give the line, so I will get that from him. What? All right. All right. What we're going to have to do then is continue this public hearing.
Okay.
Do we have a date that we can put them back on again?
How, when do you think that you'll get a revised drawing to show everything where the stairs are going?
I'm sure within a week at least.
We could probably put it on, um... If I had it by December 5th, we can put it on late on December 12th.
Done, do it.
Any other issues besides the...
That's, did you see any other issues?
No.
Well, it's the only issue that I see. Um, Ben?
No, I don't really have any comments on it.
Okay.
No, just, that's, okay, thank you.
I think I'm sorry that, um... Uh-uh. Karen? There was somebody who approved it, but it's telling me.
We haven't done that for anybody else.
So we're not going to start now.
But, I mean, it depends what the rest of the board makes.
Yes. I, I don't agree.
Do you agree to this report?
Yes.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Why you showing this now?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I want to continue the request until December 12th, 2019.
Yes.
At Montauk Road.
Why did you say 8:30? With the time for action, the time for...
Where to go?
How, um... Uh, December 31st.
December 31st, Montauk Road, December 31st, 2019.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excuse me, ma'am. Can I ask a question? We're neighbors here.
Yes.
And I want to ask a question.
Certainly. Would you identify this?
Yeah. Peter and I live at 353 Halloway Road.
Yes.
And there's a couple neighbors here as well.
I'm sorry I didn't recognize you.
That's okay. Question for you. Is there any way our neighbor, as neighbors, that, no problem with his parents or siblings, but it's not going to turn into a rental unit for anyone to rent? Is there any way that we can limit that?
No.
As long as the parcel, whether it's the main dwelling or the accessory, is owner occupied, the owner of the property, they could rent, theoretically, they could rent this out. It's pretty small.
No, I just didn't know.
Yeah.
I was not aware of this, got a letter from the mayor. I have four young children, you know, that live, play, um, right there in the yard and was not aware that, you know, this was being built and nor did I know that, uh, in our yards, we bought each other and nor did I know that you could build something and have anyone potentially rent to it without any form of process.
Well, this is the process.
This is the process.
No, I'm saying...
But the structure is already built.
The structure is already, you could put someone in there and they don't necessarily...
Not legally.
Not legal, no.
That's what I mean.
But legally, though, it can occupy it. But to make it an accessory dwelling, this is the process. An accessory dwelling is not limited to just the purpose that has been stated here. There are multiple uses of accessory dwelling that are, are approved in the zoning bylaw. So they would have the opportunity to do that as long as they occupy one of the two residences.
Yep. Thank you.
Anything else?
So you won't get re-notification of the public hearing? The public hearing is continued till 8:30 on December 12th. Okay? We'll just, we'll see you later.
Thank you.
Is there anybody? I don't think so. It's just two.
No, I can't.
Nope.
I need something done December 3rd, February 11th.
Okay. December 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. No, we can do, you have time.
Oh, hi. Thank you.
Yes. Is there, um, there's... Excuse me. We don't have anybody here before, and it's pretty very...
I believe Jeffrey, he's, but he right, he's got his ID and he's probably the most...
All right, so...
We could, um...
Let's do a catching, then.
We don't have any minutes.
Okay? All right.
Okay.
I'm too slow to get them down, so you... I want to approve the requisition of $6,159 for most of the living for period of services based field of Seaside Cituate. $3,575 and 72 cents for most of the living for period of services of 21 at Seaside Cituate. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. No else? Please on your force. Ben? Since last week.
Let's see. I went to Shellfish Advisory Committee meeting and they were really just kind of get, getting prepped for, there was a big meeting last night in Cohasset. And it was really a Cohasset meeting, but the Shellfish, some Cituate folks were invited to kind of provide information as needed. So I went there and everybody was talking about that. And we're still waiting for something to vote on the rules and regulations. But the town of Cohasset has a lot of concerns as well as some people in, in Cituate.
But there was quite a project in the matter, and they're talking about that.
Yeah, so that's kind of ongoing. I also went to Water Resource Committee meeting and let's see what's, a lot of the water infrastructure improvements that were planned are for this fall before the rebuild have kind of been on track. They completed ice picking. They've done water main repair or replacement work on Gannett Road, Mount Royal, Bluefield Road, and those are all pretty much done except for kind of like final paving. But that's kind of in a holding pattern until they, if the road's going to get dug up again for some purpose. They've completed seven of nine phases of the unit direction of flushing program, which apparently has made a big difference. They haven't been able to do that since the pre-1930 water lines have been replaced and a lot of parts done. And we're getting to where now we can actually start a real flushing program so that then the pipes won't explode under the pressure of that. And anecdotally, there's been improvement in the quality of the water in terms of our high levels of manganese. The water department did some re-sampling in Ocatoleburg and compared it to samples that were analyzed in June and they noticed a marked decrease in the concentrations of manganese. So that's kind of a good sign, but it's also anecdotal. We don't have any analysis to show why that might be happening. It's presumed that it's from some of the improvements that may have come up. Most, of most value this board, I guess, is what's going on with the water study. And Kevin Cafrey was there, provides some more of an update. And apparently they're still on track to have most of the study completed by mid-January. And they're hoping to have a, called it a public meeting, but I don't know if that's really the right word. Maybe it's for the people that are involved in the water study, kind of like overseers of that project. They're going to try to have a meeting sometime in mid-December, he said, but it was nothing concrete. And he acknowledged that there has been some time lost on progress on that study, partly because of a change order that was issued to the consultant to work on the flushing program in lieu of the water study. But I guess they are still on track and trying to think what else was of note. And then the two, two policy initiatives that the Water Resource Committee is working on, one is to look into the regulation of private irrigation wells so that during periods of severe drought, watering restrictions will be imposed on those folks that also have private irrigation wells. But that's kind of in a holding pattern until this water study, they even know really what the impact of, or know more about quantity and, and how private water irrigation might impact total quantity and availability of water. And they're also in a holding pattern on their water offsets policy for new development. And again, now it's kind of contingent on the water study being completed and reviewed. That's, I'll let someone else cover the Cituate meeting.
One thing about the water study is that when they took this off, they committed to providing two, bi-weekly sort of updates and provide in-progress information. None of that's happened. And I guess I don't have any, don't have any sense of what exactly they're doing or what they're going to deliver. And I would like, if you would, Karen, to talk to, to the water department and see if they plan to live to any of those commitments they made at that point in time.
But as you are aware, I've been sending an email about once a week because I think you're on the email. So I will ask why...
Yeah, I haven't seen any information.
Why, why we're not getting the updates. I will use those emails to ask why we're not getting the bi-weekly updates and, you said, what else?
They were supposed to, as they developed information, share graphs with us.
Okay. I will send that, um...
And maybe it's the case that they diverted all their effort to other things and they don't have any graphs to do.
I, I might be able, I mean, so that was a major concern the other day when Kevin was there, of the chair, as well as other members of the Water Resource Committee. And I can, Kevin pretty much said that the, really the updates happened with them. So I don't think it's a matter of the planning board not, us not receiving that. I, I think that he admitted that, I think it's tied upon, he admitted that the consulting firm, whether it's for the direction of the town or of their own fault, has not been keeping up that side of the bargain in terms of providing these, these updates. So by all means, I would keep chipping at it, but...
What are you asking for?
Yeah.
I'm concerned that we're going to find ourselves in January, February, somebody's going to drop a big tongue on our desk without having any kind of...
And I said that to him last week. I said that to him as well, so...
Yeah.
I will do that. And I make sure that it is CC to everyone, including the town administrator. I can only do, whatever. Last night, three of us were at an update on North Cituate's zoning. And one of the things that came out of it first and foremost is that, and this was mentioned at the selectives meeting on Tuesday night, that Cohasset and Cituate have finally come to a meeting of minds as far as sewer is concerned in North Cituate. The board selected and Cohasset have been on board with a regional plan, but the sewer commissioners, maybe not too much, but I think they have finally come to their whatever. So they're on board. The next step is involving the engineers. There's a meeting coming up in January, January 29th, 2020, to go even further. They're either going to go down South Main Street to the Cohasset Treatment Plant, 200,000 gallons from Cituate to Cohasset and then 200,000 gallons more up to Howell, which does have in fact capacity. And watch, they're in the process of either upgrading or pulling back. They don't need all of the capacity that they have at this point. So that was the plus. We're also, we also talked about the zoning initiatives for North Cituate. We have a consultant from MAPC. It'll, it'll be sort of two groups. The commercial, which I consider business, retail in the core of the village. And then on the outskirts, more of multifamily, residential, that type, small cottages, et cetera. It's a work in progress. But we're hoping to be able to go before town meeting. There'll be a public hearing with the planning board and then a build a town meeting in April, April 13th. One of the concerns is that businesses that would be, that would come to town, would the residents have any control over these businesses? No. Can't. And it all boils down to people basically vote on businesses by utilizing them. And if they don't utilize them, they don't use them, then they go out of business itself. It sort of takes care of itself. Is that what you want for?
Trepid pools.
Trepid pools.
The experience you've had on Tuesday, we may not have, talked about this especially in our country, where Chief Justice Puskin Island, the bottom line is that they don't care for the three curbs guys. They prefer to see it two, if they understand because it's only why they're a three. We talked a little bit about it. First, the first entrance/exit is one of the most screwy on it because in fact, the topography of it coming down, and to make it come back, it's wide 24 feet, which the state requiring, that it ends up, there's a cut to make, because the road has to come down into the inner, from the Chief Justice into the, into the development. Has come down, so there's probably an 18-foot cut that's taken on the south side of that. They're going to write us a letter basically to the effect that they don't like it, but they, they can see where it has to be, but they erase it. It comes in terms of numbering, street numbering and making sure the axis is maintained.
Then what?
What road are you talking about?
Chief Justice Puskin.
We're clear.
Well, I know three, but what, what connection are you talking about?
Connection, they're all, that's sort of the three common driveways coming up.
Oh, the common driveways.
It's a common driveway plan.
Between Old Forge and the, um, Westwood, check out your car. You come up over the hill, down, that set a sale pending sign on the property for a long, long time.
But it's, it's, um, it's three common driveways serving six homes?
No, it's serving, um...
Three, six, seven, eight, nine.
Three?
16, um, 16 units of duplex. So, you know, the, one common driveway serves six units, six again, and then four. The stakes are, um, the state, the central lines of the driveways are stakes, so that you can see that the stakes are along Chief Justice cushion up there. So when you're driving by, you may want to look at those because they are back on the agenda on December 19th.
So they're going to make it three separate curbs ups there?
Yes.
That sounds like it's beating more than what's allowed. I thought it was three units.
Well, you get three lots on each common driveway.
Three lots, yeah. So it's...
Three lots. Then I got a two book for a lot.
Right.
All right, so I'll pick up a little bit where, where both Ann and Bill left off. So the next two months are pretty, pretty busy with projects. So we are planning on having a zoning workshop for first meeting in January so we can get an idea of what zoning articles are being proposed, you know, prior to the public hearing so that, you know, other people, the townspeople, get an idea of what's being proposed. Right now, we're working on the North Cituate, we're working on signs, and we're...
I actually don't think we should tackle signs. Why? To what purpose?
What we have now is illegal.
So everybody voted on leave it in a legal, so would we go legal?
The town faces, could face a huge lawsuit.
Over, we're not enforcing it, so what does it matter?
It's, it's, the way it's written now, it's a violation of freedom of speech.
But if we're not enforcing it, that isn't violating anybody's freedom of speech. I guess I, you know, we went through this whole conversation, town meeting, nobody spoke up, town council didn't speak up, nobody talked about this at all. And everybody just said it was ambiguous. So leave it as a legal, you know, clause. So I, I don't know to what end we're going to tackle this once more, just to end up in the same place again.
I think we're going to try to get you all the background information and have it be better verbalized, why we need to do this.
I'd like to see something in writing that, that tells us that this is a problem and what the problem is.
We are...
Because nobody could articulate it on a town meeting.
We're proposing to hire a consultant so that the consultant can help us guide, guide us through it. We, I had a conversation with one consultant today and the consultant indicated that it, you know, the town is really exposed here.
So where's, is there a legal opinion on this side?
Try the ACL do.
Now, is, has town council provided some kind of legal opinion?
Town council provided us nothing in writing. But we're going off a Supreme Court case. So I, we, I will absolutely attempt to get you that information and I agree, we need to be better prepared, but...
I think otherwise it's a waste of time.
So, and then the building department would like to fix section 830 of the zoning bylaw. So they'll be coming in next time to tell you why they want to fix it, to see if you would like to sponsor the article. Has to do kind of with Darrell Holmes. So we're also working on stormwater rates. We're getting close to getting, um, a final draft, which we've been working on for probably about two years. And that will be coming to the planning board for informal discussion before that goes to a public hearing as well. And then later in January, we'll be doing interviews for a position on the design review committee. We've had, we've had several people interested, we're gathering resumes, so that will be on second meeting in January. I was able to file yesterday for the, with the state for the four units for the subsidized housing inventory in Fifty Country Way. So we'll have to see what the state says on that. I also filed the, um, the annual certification to DHCD for that, those projects as well. Those are the same type of units that are going to be local action units that are, that you approved with the Drew project as well. So they'll be doing those. We've been...
And that's, that's how many they have? Four, right?
Four.
That was totally, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've been able in the past few weeks to issue several outstanding certificates of completion for stormwater permits because we're probably getting all the right as-built and information. So we've made good progress in some, in some of that department. But we still remain pretty inundated with, with projects. Plus you have projects under construction as well. We continue to spend a lot of time with Seaside and Cituate.
And when you have nothing else to do, take a look at the, in the ballot, and check out the historical house on the United States.
We are having the meeting, internal meeting on that with, on Tuesday night with the historic commissions.
So based on what happened to the house, I'm actually going to go in the end of that That's a historic house, it's a vital house. They give you something in the back, you check all the shingles off, all the windows are out. And you have a section of Elm and Cardworth, at least it's down there. I don't know. Mr. Martin talks about it, it's a historic house. Giant machinery there and next to white ashtray.
You can always inquire the building department because, I mean, if it was demed away, they would have had to wait a year, so they would have had to go to the historic commission and the building department would have that information.
All right, it is now 7:30 and we are having a public hearing, stormwater and site plan administrative review, common driveway, 16, 18 to 20, Man Hill Road. In accordance with the town of Cituate stormwater regulations, approved for... In accordance with the town's Situate stormwater regulations approved for twenty nineteen and with the Situate general bylaws, section three two oh five oh stormwater, the planning board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, November twenty-third, twenty nineteen, at seven thirty P. M. in the Joseph P. Moore Emergency Operations Center of Public Safety Complex, eight hundred Chief Justice Cushion Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by advocate Robert Terrell, administrator and owner, the state of Patsy Joe Terrell, for stormwater permit with a property consisting of three approval not required lots, with a common driveway on two of the lots located on Zero Manhill Road between, between twelve and thirty. Advocate refers to as sixteen, eighteen, and twenty, as over forty thousand square feet of land is proposed, proposed for disturbance. A public hearing will also sit in a ten slowly held, the site plan administrative review, the common driveway, and approximately one hundred seventy-one feet to access two fifty foot frontage lots. The property shown on assessors map is parcel twenty-seven dash seven dash nine A, and is available for review and payment with office, town, town hall, Situate, of others and other interests are invited to attend this public hearing. And Grant, Andy is making the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. My name is Greg Dansey, for us in the hearing, representing our client in the state of Patsy Joe Terrell. I'd like to begin by giving a brief history. We have two fifty-foot frontage lots here, which have received approval, and we've got three septic designs, which also have received approval for the water health. And we are here to, uh, under a, uh, a special permit common driveway and also for a stormwater permit. What we have posed here is, um, for runoff control, we've provided, uh, the permeable pavement, um, for the common driveway and for the, uh, conventional block and the driveway. That permeable pavement, it controls stormwater runoff, it provides, um, a lot of stormwater recharge, which are two of the more important standards of the stormwater policy. And the other good thing about the permeable pavement is its maintenance is less. It needs less salting, it needs less standing just due to its, um, recharge nature. So I really do think that that is a, a good fit for this, for this area. With, with that, we have minimized the amount of, uh, stormwater controls. We've got an infiltration trench, and this is basically, um, to control stormwater from going off onto an abiding property, and we'll manage it, we'll bring it down. There's a little basin here that, um, it's an integral part of the lawn, will be maintained as a lawn. It'll discharge into a, uh, a wide, shallow swale, and this is going to be part of, it's a waterfall, this well, it's part of the, uh, the BMPs, and it'll attenuate the runoff, and it'll also convey it to the, to the north where, uh, it will maintain the existing condition runoff pattern. And we are also preparing, uh, proposing a, uh, a, 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 a lining area. It, we're proposing, um, what's called an amended soil, which is a, an engineered, um, topsoil mix. It's a, it's a combination of the standard lawn and sand, and it's rototilled into the ground, and what that does is it, um, enhance the, the permeability of, um, of the site. And this is a, a very, uh, nice lid BMP. And one of the reasons why it, it's particularly nice is because not only does it serve to control runoff, it provides additional recharge, and it does it throughout the site, so you've got less scour, you've got less erosion issues, and it also, because of the permeability, it increases the aeration of the lawn, and it generally produces, um, a better lawn that requires less, um, less watering. And in a town where basically you're banned from watering the lawn, except for with the well, I think it's a good strategy to, to employ. This particular BMP policy has been used successfully in, in capacity. I used it on a project, uh, the Beechwood Street, which was primarily a ledge project. There's a lot of, there's a lot of removal, um, the soils weren't all that great, and it was used, and the grass is, is really green, shallow lawn basins, and, um, and it really looked nice. And one of the nice things about it is, if you can avoid a detention basin or minimize it, in my opinion, it's always a step in the right direction, um, for a number of reasons. One, it provides, uh, stormwater quality control throughout the site, and it's decentralized location, um, it's less of a threat with the triple B, with, with, uh, with mosquitoes, less maintenance, and, and in my opinion, it adds a lot of aesthetic value. At this point, I'd like to entertain any questions that anybody may have.
All right, thank you, um, Cam. We sent this out for engineering purview, and your purview engineers here, they identified a number of issues that, um, will need to be resolved prior to approval. So I'd like Peter to give us.
Good evening, uh, Peter Palmarie from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors. We did, uh, submit a report to the planning board, um, we did have some concerns, but typically, we recommend an additional soil testing, um, in the areas of the perviable pavement, two detention basins, as well as the infiltration trench here, obviously to make sure that the soils are present and to determine the groundwater elevation. We did have a concern about the limited clearing. Basically, this, these three lots are going to be clear cut. I'm not quite sure, and that was one of my questions, was the timing of it and how would we all be coordinated? I don't know whether they're going to sell a lot separately, or it's going to be developed all at the same time, or how that was going to be handled.
Any big trees on there as well?
Sorry?
Any big trees?
Oh, yeah. It's heavily wooded, I'd say.
So are, have any of those been affected?
I don't believe so.
Why would they think about clear cutting?
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Um, it's quite heavily treated, I, um, I think it would probably make sense, but again, this whole area from the street back, as far as I could tell, is, is tree, heavily wooded. And I, I think the idea of soil amendments may have some merit. My concern is that it's actually a DEP-approved BMP, um, because if it isn't, while it, again, it may be a good idea, um, we have to have things that are approved by DEP, because if, if the application of the soil amendment, if the goal is to change what's called the hydrologic soil group, which is the, um, rate at which runoff would go over land, then I think it has to be DEP should approve it, and I, I've asked for some information there.
So DEP doesn't, as far as you know, they don't have a, a BMP, honestly?
Not that I know of. Um, and they're constantly upgrading it, so there may be one out there, but I'm not aware of it. I did recommend, they checked the design, the water qualities, well, I, I would think it's quite deep enough, um, that's easy enough to take care of. And then again, kind of going back to the clear cutting of the lots, um, I think erosion control, some more information needs to be provided on that. And again, how it would be staged, you know, what's, what's the disposition of the lots? Because if one person does advise this lot and develops it, then what happens with this one, what happens with the swale, what if this isn't built first? So that, you know, again, these are tied together. And again, I think, um, I recommend the, anything relative to the drainage system and putting ameasement, um, so there's always the ability to access it. Again, we, we wouldn't want the person who lives here to fill this swale because they just think they'd like to plant something there, so, um, those are my concerns. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for you, just in terms of, look at the, uh, the before and after on the watershed design, and the before, it looks like everything's going in one direction, right, it's all sloped in one direction. This looks like it's creating mounds and, and runoff in different directions than it was before, so have you looked at all of the, sort of the boundary conditions on those things?
I, I did, and one of my, um, questions, and Greg will probably address this actually better than me, but, um, I was concerned that it, it, the post-development watershed plans shows everything going in the same direction as, I mean, the existing conditions, but I don't think that the proposed convi- condition defines the plenty area of the developed lots enough to be able to make that statement. They're all being routed down here, but in my mind, the grading doesn't, the proposed grading doesn't, um, show that enough, and that was one of my comments in my letter. I think it should be checked and revised to more clearly define the forecast.
Okay.
What's, what's the map for drainage of the way up there?
It all comes down this way.
It's fairly continual slope all the way down.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty steady...
If you look at that, you've got drainage in multiple directions, because you've sort of mounted things.
Well, well, again, the, the idea is towards the rear, this swale is going to direct the flow back to where it was going before. Up here, again, the, the intent of the design is to direct it down around to this basin, which will let pipe it down and exit down here, so I think the intent is there, but I'm not sure the grading shows it, um, well enough.
Why is it necessary to have down every tree on this property? Why is it necessary, Paul, to clear cut this property?
Well, first of all, the, um, septic systems have to be mounted, and based upon the burn rates, some of them are fairly high rates, so that, that requires everything to be cleared in that area, meaning the area of the homes is declared, and then the rest of the area, I mean, the septic systems, you can see the size of them. This is the one on the number twenty, there's one on the front, and the smaller one back here, what would be reserved area here. So when we grade the site, we, you know, we have to take the side up, the septic systems. We also made sure that, um, homes were not in the water cable, so they don't have a problem with, you know, the basement areas being on the water cable. And what that does is, um, why don't you take that into consideration, at least this whole area here is going to be regraded, and Greg is proposing a soil amendment to the backyard, so if you look...
All right, why, why is the backyard, why can't you leave that alone?
Well, there's, there's septic systems in the front that have to be cleared, you know, to meet the regulations. You've got the area of the house, you've got a lawn area around it, you have the backyard, and the same with all these lots. This is the common driveway coming in, this has to be cleared, you've got a stormwater basin to meet your stormwater rights. You know, over here, we've got another smaller basin, and this is being regraded to direct the water on the property down to the other one that we ended it, so nothing goes on to be applied to property. Almost every site that we worked on today, when you take into account the groundwater elevations, and what you're doing with the site, whether it's residential, commercial, a lot of these sites end up being cleared to meet the regulations to, uh, treat the water and have recharge down to the ground, and it takes, and it takes a certain area to do it.
How much fill are you going to bring in?
We don't have a quantity of fill. These, these grays in here are changing above flood. But, um, so, you know, the trees in here, some of these trees are small, there's, there's some larger trees, but not that many. There, there's a fair amount, there's a fair amount of brush and shrubs at about six to seven feet tall, and there, there, there are some trees on the site, but the plan is to, um, have the yard's landscape, you know, in the area of the homes, the, the probably the lawn areas.
We can pull that drainage swale forward this way?
Pardon?
And, and leave, you know, at least some of the back lot lawn, would it?
Well, we're showing the tree line here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, can you move that swale up the hill, basically, and leave a tree line, leave some of the tree line?
Well, we, we can look at it. I mean, to the extent that we would still need the stormwater rec, the grading would...
What do you think, is it feasible?
I think it's possible, I mean, I, I, I think it would be, um, I think it would make sense if you could leave some of it up there, and grading out there for, for everybody.
Well, you, you guys have already kind of alluded to it through your questions, but I, I, I have a serious problem with this proposed stormwater plan, particularly with the idea of clear cutting that back area, and, and I guess I'll, I, I'll ask you, because that hasn't been specifically answered, are, will that whole back extent be clear cut? Just a yes or no answer to find out. Is the intention to clear cut that whole back part of these lots?
It is, but we can, you can add some...
Will, will there also be grubbing and removal of topsoil with, with that?
Yeah, and...
And that's filling and regrading?
Would be rototilled into the existing topsoil.
Right, so that leads me to my comment, which is that, I mean, I'm not a professional engineer, but I have a fairly robust background in this field, and to call this low-impact development, I mean, I very much agree with the, um, Mr. Palmaieri's. I, I really need to see in the state stormwater handbook where this idea of bringing in amended soil and rototilling it in counts as the best management practice, because I've never heard of it. The term LID means low-impact development, low impact, in which the primary principle is to minimize site disturbance by clear cutting and grubbing and, and bringing in all this fill and tilling it in, I really think that's absolutely counter to the principles of low-impact development, and really a, a good stormwater design if you're trying to kind of do it with any sort of, um, ingenuity, I guess. This, this seems like it's just kind of a way to quickly kind of meet the requirements of the bylaw, and I think it's going to be at the detriment to most of the providers. That's my main comment. I also would say that I'm familiar with this area and that it is a woodland of high ecological value as well, and the existing trees and soil conditions probably help to attenuate a lot of the overland flow and, um, deal with, um, water uptake, because I know along the houses along Christopher Lane, it's a, it's a wet area back there, and really high groundwater, and I'm also, makes me question hydrologically how a site disturbance of this magnitude might actually impact, um, groundwater, um, itself, or groundwater breakout, downgrading, and how it affects the homes.
Phil?
I think there's no reason to worldwide, if it needs to be prepared that way, if you're both, I mean, you've got natural drainage and directional, and maybe you can take advantage of it, come back up and minimize it. You've got three pretty good side bases in there, and I think there's, there should be a way that you'd be able to minimize the effect for those.
These are the basins, these are, these are areas of the septic systems, the basins that we have are here, near the...
Plus a, plus a trench in the back, right? It sounds like the same trench problem we ran into...
Somewhere else.
Somewhere else. Somewhere else.
Are there infiltrators for that roof from?
No.
Okay. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a little bit beyond the pale, gentlemen. And I think we can do better. We should do better. We're not... People are very, very concerned about these, things like that. Very important. So you have something to do with what you're doing. I understand. I understand you want to maximize what you're doing. And it's easy to go in and just cut everything down and basically start from nothing. Let's be a little bit more creative, please. I'll open it up to the public.
If anyone knows of the plan...
Could you please identify yourself, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Richard Manier with the Butter 49th St. Louis. I noticed in the back corner of the middle property, as proposed, that there's an elevation change of about eight feet in height over the course of about 20 feet in distance. That sounds a little peculiar to me. I'm not an engineer, but I really wonder how that's supposed to be a way to facilitate runoff anyway.
I'm sorry, I didn't get where the location you were pointing at.
The back corner that's identified as garage on the center property.
So where the septic system is, where it's mounted there?
Well, it says garage. And if you look at the contour lines behind the garage, you go one, two, three, four, five, six lines, each line representing a foot. And that's over the course of maybe 20 feet. Does that help? I'm sorry, it's a little hard to...
Yeah, no, I was just trying to get my parents here.
And then the driveway on the house to the north, that driveway contour line also is about eight foot incline over. This seems like a peculiar, kind of peculiar arrangement of land that we know to be extremely wet, as Mr. Bernstein has already mentioned. Just trying to figure out how, what... It takes a little more thought probably to know what's going on here. We just don't want a swale that's going to be filled with water most of the year. That's a huge concern to us. There's another project down the road on Hand Vinel that has swaled. It seems to have collected water on a pretty regular basis. So as a butter, we have these natural concerns. So I appreciate the chance to express those.
The nature of this is because you graze the houses?
No. The grades are controlled by Title V septic system.
In the driveway?
Yeah, in the driveway. Because these grades that we see here over the septic system, we have to hold these. This is the minimum grades that we could get away with to meet the Title V right here. And we also have to have a 2% slope over the looching areas. And also, we want to get the foundations above the ground line.
I think that was the area we were talking about, not the septic system, but behind that house. It looks like you elevated everything in order to...
Yeah. But if you can see these grades here, we have to hold this 57 contour, and we graded it down to minimize the impact. But we still have to come up to get into this house. And this house, again, this house, the elevations of this house and the foundation, they're tied in with the septic system and the groundwater. Both of them are driven by groundwater elevations. So, and that controls the slide elevation of the garage. So I have to take it from this 53 elevation up to the garage, which is 59. And from there, I have to hold the scrape. And I came down as much as I could. I came down to this elevation here. This elevation was set by, again, the groundwater table. And I want to keep my foundations out of the groundwater. And it also has to tie into the septic system. So that's why you see the gradings as they are. And this, it's a three-to-one slope. It's typical of what you find in and around town. And it's done in an area where it's not going to be seen from the road or from an abuser's houses. This is all wooded in here.
So it's all wooded where?
Right in here. I mean, the site is wooded. Offsite is wooded as well.
It's not wooded on the top, on the north side, though. It's that rock wall is on that western side.
It's not wooded on the north side.
Number 30, I'm sorry, Christopher Jeffs, 30 Man Hill. So we are right on the other side of this house here. That one house at the top corner there will essentially be in our backyard the way this is listed. Already, our lot is quite wet in that back corner. Quite wet, on a regular day. And we do our sun pump runs 24/7. I mean, there's so much groundwater up there. So we do have a lot of concerns about this plan. A lot of concerns that we've got all the trees. A lot of concerns that we have owls and hawks and all sorts of amazing animals there. And changing the picture and the culture of the street as well.
Anyone else comments?
Marla Manier on 29 Christopher Lane. And I certainly appreciate the comments of the board as far as the wooded nature of the lot and your concern about clear cutting. We are, when we heard it was going to be clear cut, we were just so disappointed. And so I was going to ask, since there are some very sizable trees, just, there's a stone wall, which is the border between this property and our property.
What grade is your property on site?
29 Christopher Lane. So what our, the driveway, the shared driveway, if you go directly back, that is our house. So our house, where the split is between those two properties, that's our property. And so there's a stone wall there which separates our property from that one. And there are some very sizable trees on both our side of the wall, but also just on the other side of the wall. And I was going to ask the board to please ask the developer to leave those large trees there. They take up a lot of water in and of themselves, but that would protect the people on Christopher Lane. If a lot of the trees were left, then we could be protected from this development too visually. And I'd probably, I guess.
Is the stone wall your wall, or is it on their property?
It's a common stone wall.
It's owned by both?
We don't, I don't know. We have no idea. It's just always been there.
Do you know? Have you surveyed this? Do you know that?
Yes, the stone wall is the property line. So it's a common stone wall. They own to the center of the stone wall.
So along the same lines that we've mentioned, moving that swale further onto the property so that those trees along the stone wall can be saved?
Well, I would, I think that's kind of secondary. I think primary is, as Ben suggested, to look at this from a low-impact perspective of how much can you preserve as opposed to how much can you wipe out, right? And I don't know what other methodologies you consider in sort of low-impact development. I think you should do that. And it would also be good to identify, because I think that's part of what we want to look at, is trees at 12-inch or greater. At least have them on plants so we know where the big trees are.
So to your point there, if you, if they are able to have a buffer along the back there, what is the minimum that the board would like to see so they can give some guidance to the applicant?
Well, I would turn it down. What's the maximum they can give us? Not what's the minimum, what's the maximum that can be developed there? That's what I'd like to know.
And I also, I know grading oftentimes dictates, you know, what stays and what goes when it comes to site development. But, I mean, we can, there's the use of terracing and retaining walls and all sorts of other landscape architecture that can still help you hit your grades and preserve some sort of open space there. I mean, I know it becomes a cost issue, but it's something that can be explored.
Yes. Mariah Applebaum, 33, Christopher Lane. We're abutting at the back end of property. We're next door neighbors, so at the upper corner.
Yep.
I was just wondering if we are able to keep a buffer, which would be great. Is whoever buys the property then, could they come in and take the trees down?
It just happened.
Okay.
It just happened. But you wouldn't have to condition this in such a way to try and ensure that if it doesn't happen?
It's just a beautiful wooded area. We have families deer. We have turkeys. We have foxes. We have hawks. It's just... Owls. Apples. Oh, yeah, there are these.
What were the test pits done?
Test pits were done in the area of the septic systems. There were some test pits done out in the front and some out the back. These test pits, we thought at the park that it was a very slow park rate. And so we tried to go out back. You know, our first preference is to put the septic system out front. This lot, we had no other choice but to go out back because it's just too narrow to support a septic system. But this lot, we tried to get it out in the front, and it just, it didn't work. This worked very well. We got much better rates back here. So we did perks in the three areas of the septic systems and out in the front here.
How much variation in groundwater?
I'm sorry?
How much variation in groundwater?
The variation in the groundwater, the most we saw was back here. We got some good rates in this area. But if memory serves me correctly, the groundwater was, I'm going to say roughly about 38 inches down, plus or minus five to 10 inches. It was somewhere in that vicinity. It really didn't vary much.
May I ask another question?
I'm sorry, Christopher Jeffs, 30 Man Hill. So that collection basin that's abutting our property there, 30 Man Hill, no, the other one, the top, yeah. So what's the effect of that on our property? And I'm assuming that we discussed the rock wall across the back, as that's common, and our rock wall as well is common there. So what is the effect of that basin going to be on our property? And you said something about a pipe, first one that runs down alongside. And what's our effect?
Okay. And that's a good question. When I did the analysis, we do what's called the pre and a post-analysis. We look at what's running off there now versus what's going to run off after things were built. And what I did is I analyzed along this stretch of the property line. There was a watershed that came up here. And basically, under the existing condition, there's a portion of land that just came right down, and it ran down this way. And that's a divide. The rest of the site, you can tell by the contours, runoff will run perpendicular with the contours. And if you're looking at the existing contours, which are the dashed ones, you've got a flow path where it runs this way. So there was a divide here. We analyzed what was coming down and what was onto your, coming across this line here. And then we analyzed what was coming down there as affected the house now. What we're proposing on the driveways, this is called the primary pavement. The water just goes right into it, and it seeps, and it recharges into the ground. It produces virtually no runoff. It just goes right into the ground.
But does it pop back up on the abuttered property as groundwater? Like what we get coming up from below?
No. You know, it doesn't... Groundwater travels at about several... It takes about a day or two to travel just one foot into the ground. It's a slow-moving flow. But what happens is we've got the grading here so that anything that comes off onto the, you know, over the front property line, and I think Peter had a question about this. It will eventually, it'll take the course, and it'll flow north. But we've got a gradient, you know, grade here where any runoff coming off of these septic systems would be directed this way through an underground culvert. And I had to orient it like this so that I got my culvert requirements, because this is a low-point driveway. And if water runs across the driveway, it's intercepted by a small basin so that it doesn't discharge onto your property. From there, I've got a culvert that sends it down in this area. And so this was analyzed with the effect of this. And this area here was less than what was running off in the pre-development condition. And this area here, what was coming across here, is much less than what was in the pre-development condition. And one of the reasons why I put the basin here is because this is what's called a sensitive area. Your house is right here. I want to make sure that I'm not impacting on your property because that would not bode well for any of us. So that's why these extra controls were implemented and designed where they were designed.
It just, it looks large. I mean, just from sitting here, it looks to be, you know, a good portion of the size of the existing barn that's going to be removed. And that's a very large barn. So I guess I worry about the appearance of it also. You know, it's going to be a whole, I don't know exactly where it would be. But then also, if somebody wants to come in, buys a house and starts landscaping it, are they going to hand and change the way that it flows?
No. The lateral area of this basin is, I mean, the plan's drawn to scale. So that's going to be the shape and size. The depth of it is going to be approximately 18 inches. And it's going to be a long, it's going to be a grass area. It's going to look like part of the lawn. There will be a subtle depression in there. It'll capture the water. And there'll be a four-inch pipe, PVC pipe, that drains it off in that direction.
All right, so this is Christopher Jeffs, 30 Man Hill, of the property to the north. So this pipe, is this something that's going to be impervious to clogging? Or is it going to clog up and then the water just...
No. Well, that's a good question. That's a legitimate concern. And what we've done is it's not just a straight shot. What we're proposing is we're putting in one... What we've, what we're proposing is we're putting in one, a long manhole, which it, it's gonna be, when the pipe changes direction, it's gonna go into a, a vertical twenty-four-inch diameter pipe. There'll be a, a cover on it, flush to grade. Or we could, we could put it down six inches a moment, see over it so that you can't even see it, just have to dig it up if you have to access it. If it does clog, it could be snaked from, from the basin through to that manhole or it could be flushed. And the same thing from here to the outfall, it could be snaked or it could be flushed. So, if there is a clog, it can, it can be easily maintained. It can be either snaked or flushed. And, and it can be flushed from this end, it can be flushed from this end, and from the interior. And we put it at a bend because a bend is the most likely place where you would get a clog and/or at the beginning of the pipe. If some debris fell into the, into the basin and it got washed into the pipe, most, you're most likely to get a clog would be up in this area here, which is very accessible from here or from this point as well.
So, are those property owners gonna be aware that they're gonna be responsible for them gaining that, with water breach?
Yeah, it's in, it's in their O and M agreement. And, you know, it's gonna be self-policing because they're not gonna want, wanna be looking at a, a puddle of water either. So, if it does, if there is an issue, it's easy to maintain. It's readily accessible. And it's not like, they're not gonna know about it, it's not out of sight or out, and out of mind either.
I think, I think that is a very valid point. And in some of the issues that we did see, whether it's with swales or pipes or whatever, the homeowner is not gonna maintain them. We can put all the rules and regulations in these documents, but there's nobody there who can do it. There's no one. There's no one near the force. There has to be a better way to deal with this, to make it as simple and easy to be used.
Well, simplicity is a, is a very crucial part of any, any maintenance program. And that is one of the things that I really tried to incorporate. One of the easiest things that I know of is to have the standard maintenance be commensurate with the standard landscape. I mean, if, the, most of this maintenance is gonna be keeping it clean and patting it, which is what the landscaper is gonna do. And they gotta, if, if this, if they do that, the chances of a clog occurring are minimized. Now, it's not a perfect world. Some things, you know, you get some leaf that is built up. But if it's being tended to, it can be easily cleaned. And a, a good, you know, a good landscaper would know not to stop leaves or debris down the pipe. Now, a good land, a responsible person, not do it, but...
Not everyone is responsible.
That's true. But you need maintenance. Everything, everything requires maintenance, no matter what it is. And if it's not done, if the homeowner doesn't do it, he's gonna be living with the consequences. Now, that's the simplicity. That, that is a, a self-policing quality that is incorporated into this design, and I think it goes a long way.
All right. Anyone else? Yes.
Sherry Wilson, my husband Alan and I are here. We live in a property just to the south, twelve Man Hill Road. So, we were, when we first moved in thirty-something years ago, we were always told not to worry about the lot next door because it would never perk and they'd never build on it. And I guess the rules for perking changed at some point. We've had winters where the ground slopes from the south to the north, right?
Correct.
So, we've had winters where when the ice melts, our basement has had three feet of water in it. So, we've watched from our windows, upper windows in our house, we can see what goes on in that lot. We've seen streams going through the back of our property down to that lot. I have pictures of ponds, basically, in that lot. And I also agree, it's a beautiful lot. Thank you Ben for everything you had to say. And it's been a pleasure to live next to it for thirty years with the deer and owls and the hawks. But progress. So, my husband at the first meeting that there was, brought up, how is it legal for a perk test to be run where we've watched them come in, dig, fill, dig, fill, dig, and fill again, and then get the guy from the town to come and say, yeah, perfect? Okay, he asked that question and we never got any answer. So, okay, move forward a year. Still don't know what's, you know, when this is all gonna happen. Maybe we'll be gone by the time it's done. But a couple of other things is we know that people that lived right across Man Hill on the west side, they sold a bunch of their property, they built three houses there. And I think they had to build it up on a hill. But the people that live across from this lot, the Denacrios, he's an architect, they, they were accused, they were trying to put a barn, take, turn a barn into a house in their backyard, which they're now doing. But the people that bought the house just to the north of them complained that water was coming from their property onto them and they were having flooding. So, this is new housing right across from this, and the lay of the land is that it's all gonna slope. Now, one question is, I don't understand the piping that's going between that lot and our property. And I would ask the same question, how is that gonna impact us? I have to say that in some sense, we feel like we're uphill from this whole thing. So, maybe other than the natural water, three feet in our basement, if the snow melts, it's not gonna be any worse for us. But I would like to know what the impact would be. And we have trees on our side of property. Actually, a couple of trees from that property fell onto our property and we cleaned it up last year. That's the way it works. But we'd also like to retain as much trees as possible along the border so that, you know, for just being good neighbors, that there's a little bit of woods left. And that's all I have to say.
Yeah, it's, it's a concern. We are proposing a, a stone infiltration French. And what this will do is it'll capture runoff and pipe it to the back so that when runoff from your land comes across here, it won't get blocked off. And any, there, there's a small amount of area from our lot, it'll be intercepted before it crosses the line and, and be piped across down there. And as far as concerns with water impact from basements flooding and whatnot, what we have, we mentioned this earlier, but one of the reasons why Phil was brought here is to keep the basements up above the, the water table so that they, they won't really, there won't be a need for a sump pump. So, there won't be sump pump discharges coming out of these three houses that would exacerbate any conditions from, from other houses nor would it have an impact on any of the downstream waters.
I'm, I'm sorry, would you have to, so these houses that have basements, would you have to alter the land so much if they do not have basements, if they were on crawl? I mean, I, yeah, I, I mean, honestly, I mean, we, we bought the house, we, you know, immediately, we bought the house knowing that we were buying a house with, an old house with a fieldstone basin and an old area with a high water table. And we immediately put in, and, 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 Mrs. Hughes is just such a lovely woman, you know, we do all, when we were buying, and so we immediately put in an eight thousand dollar basement system. So, that's keeping our basement dry. And, and like I said, that thing runs twenty-four hours a day. I mean, it's just kicking on left and right. And I mean, I just, I have a lot of, I have a lot of concerns about altering the land this much. And I mean, is a basement not necessary if you're gonna be redirecting all this water to all of our properties?
Well, groundwater, as I mentioned earlier, is approximately thirty, forty inches down. A crawl space, you know, you, you gotta get it down at least twenty-four inches to get it onto, onto a parrot material. So, even though it might not be finished off or, you know, you know, even though the, the rest of the house isn't all that high, the bottom of that crawl space, the footers, are gonna be in the, in the same general area. Water gets in there, it's gonna, the homeowner is gonna pump it up, even if it's just a crawl space. The other issue is, the first flow of, of these dwellings, they have to be at that elevation just so that it, it would aesthetically look nice and that you could get a gravity flow from the house into the, into the septic system. The elevation of these septic systems, they're the driving force in this as well. And there's no getting around that, that's just the environmental code.
Yes, could you explain the elevation to the septic system on the, the northern house there, between the elevation there versus the elevation at the, at the border, and what that stands?
The elevation here at the, at the edge of the, of the, of the septic system, finish rate is forty-nine and it goes down to forty-three. It's at a three-to-one slope. A three-to-one slope would be three feet over a one-foot rise. This plan is three feet long. That's approximately a foot. So, the slope would be from there to there, that's a three-to-one slope.
So, that, that septic will be that many feet above the, the borderline in that short duration?
Above the rock wall.
It'll be above the rock wall, essentially. Because that rock wall is more than three feet.
The finish rate is...
It's not more than three feet. So, should there be a, a failure in that, that leach field or the, the piping going along that border? What does that do to that leach field? Because everything that you said was all of the slope goes most, so, it's not concentrated in there, that's what it's standing.
A DED proved system, which is, that's what this is, they have what's called a poly barrier. It's an impervious barrier, a liner that goes around the system. And that's to prevent any type of a breakup. These, these septic systems, they're designed with a reserve area. So, if something does go wrong, it can be easily replaced. You know, as long as a homeowner isn't abusing the system and putting paint, you know, running a garbage grinder when, when they shouldn't, that, that system, yeah, that, I, I can't imagine getting less than twenty-five years out of it, you know, if, if it's properly maintained. I, I, it, it shouldn't be a concern.
Okay. One more question.
Who more?
I know we've already talked about the topographical question I had before, but just looking at the, the back rear boundary we have with our neighbors and looking at the house, in that, that section of land, there's a nine-foot elevation of the course of a pretty short distance, nine feet's about the size, about the height of that, that television camera right there above the door. Door's probably seven feet, so that camera lens is about nine feet. Now, here's, here's a piece of land that's relatively flat, would you agree, right now? It's not lumpy or bumpy?
No, I, I would, no, I, I wouldn't agree with that. I've seen, I wouldn't call this...
Would you say there's any nine-feet mound on that property?
I propose...
Yeah. Now, as, as it is right now.
No.
So, I guess, I guess the impression I'm getting from, and I just wanted to make a point, of the comments that people made on the water problem that we've all experienced, that there seems to be an awful lot on this plan, it seems, with all due respect, a little bit jury-rigged. And I think that the comments that have been made by the, the board about looking at this a little more, a better, maybe a better eye on some of these issues would be a, a good recommendation. So, I just wanted to express that.
Thank you. All right.
All right. We have another, I have eight thirty, so we have a minute. You have a report from Merrill Engineers, and they have a number of comments that you, I'm sure, are planning to address. I really would like you to rethink what you're doing. I really would. And this, this is some beautiful trees, it's beautiful, this property, and just the idea of going in and cutting everything down is a crime. It is a big, dangerous crime. And then you start over again. And landscaping while it's standing is just nothing but bad to the way it was. So, if there's any way that you can minimize what you're doing and maximize in saving as much as you possibly can, I think that's in everyone's best interest. So, on that note...
How much more clear cutting do you intend to do?
All of it.
No, from where you are now?
I, I don't understand the question.
How much more clear cutting do you, do you intend to do?
They've done any yet.
We haven't done any yet.
They intend to clearly cut the whole thing, so...
Yeah, they're gonna do that.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering whether that will allow until we come back up and get a better sense of what we're actually going to plan.
So, you think there's clearing out there going on now?
Yeah.
Is there clearing going out there now?
I, I didn't mean, I don't think there is, but if there is, we have nothing to do
with it or any knowledge of it. We're not gonna do anything except to do some test pits, which are in response to Mr. Paul Mary's request, but that's not clear. I don't intend on doing anything until we get it approved.
All right. So, we need to continue with this.
I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue the public care of this whole water special for the income and driving settlement due to sixteen eighteen twenty in alone until January twenty-third, twenty-twenty, at seven p.m. and to continue the type of action to file and to tell the court until February thirteenth, twenty-twenty.
Is this sent in?
Second?
Out of phase?
Five.
Thank you, Walker County.
Yeah, what time is it?
Seven o'clock. You will not be noticed for the maintenance tier, I'm sorry.
January twenty-third?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay?
Have you guys had a good understanding of the action? You guys pretty clear?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our next item on agenda is Form A, Form A three country, please.
Form A three-three, please. Our children.
Evening.
Good evening.
John Greed, Greed Consulting. It was Derek, uh, the property owner, was eating formative way on our countryway. This Derek owns, uh, the parcels shown here. Each of the lots has adequate frontage on the countryway. Countryway yellow is a public way. It's adequate access. Each of the lots has, there's an area of all of it zoning, requirements, et cetera. Basically just bending a few lot lines from the current configuration around this lot, the immediate area is shown. Basically making the lot a little wider and not as deep. It's pretty straightforward out in our application. Any questions?
Yeah. All right, so this is the plan that they described to you last week when we were having the, um, the residential compound party hearing. What they're doing is they're make, they're changing the lot lines for four eighty-three so that it better forms to their plan for the residential compound development. All the lots there have the proper access and frontage. Um, the plan can be endorsed.
Questions before we just...
He says proper frontage. I see a fifty-foot frontage.
That's contiguous. What, what's, what's gonna happen is that, um, it's all gonna be joint, this is a step so that you're gonna join it all together so when it comes back to the residential compound development, um, it's all gonna be under one ownership. So if you go onto the other side of four eighty-three, you've got about two hundred somewhat feet of frontage. It doesn't, it doesn't matter if it doesn't have frontage. You're not determining, you're not determining if it can form the zoning. You're, you're there for four, pretty much four eighty-three, which is access and frontage.
So the other part...
Four eighty-three, that?
Lot three A.
Oh, three A.
Yeah, that one.
The part that's the fifty-foot already exists. And parcel M one already exists.
Okay, so we're just doing a lot three A? Lot three A is a new lot? Is that what it is?
It's a new configuration.
New configuration. There's no change in the frontages on any of the lots shown on that plan. The, the parcel reconfiguration or interior lines. So reshaping...
You're reshaping sort of this area over here?
Yeah, so this little piece here is getting combined with this, and this is gonna go with that to give you the twenty thousand thirty. Yeah, we were here, uh, a year ago or so, maybe two years now, the timeline, with the same, uh, property. Back then, Neil Duggan pointed out that we had a merger issue. We had to adjust some lot lines then, and we noticed at that time that this garage was over the lot line, so we adjusted this lot line actually at that time, too. Uh, we just moved it out to this location to keep it conforming, set back to the sideline.
Yep. I'm going to endorse this approval under subdivision control while they apply a plan of land in Sichet, Massachusetts. Showing a division of parcels thirty-two dash oh-seven dash oh-four, thirty-two dash oh-seven dash thirteen dash eighty, and thirty-two dash oh-seven dash oh-two-one, prepared by the great consultant LLC for Brian from Engle, Arizona, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, as the division and other subdivision because every lot showed that the plan has frontage. On at least the distance presently required under the city zoning law at a public way or a ready-to-tow correct service is maintained and used as a public way, countryway. In addition, the following though shall be added to the plan. Quote, "Plan board endorsing the office plan is not in determination as to performance and zoning regulations," quote-unquote. So second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second?
Thank you very much.
True. We try to... You said eight thirty-five?
Uh, yes. One target. Early.
One minute. Okay, um... Basically, Mr. Drew is here. Endorse, endorse the plan. Darren?
Um, they, uh, have a plan endorsement tonight. We have my hours, and we have a set of prints. They have, uh, added the things that needed to be added to the plans prior to endorsement. We have a copy of the recorded incidents, and we have a separate, uh, sheet of where all the conditions were inscribed upon, so it can be endorsed. They still have a number of items they need to do prior to pre-construction conference and construction, but this is the first step in that. Questions?
All right. I know that the plan board endorsed the issues, special winter plans, language development primitive plans Sichet, Massachusetts, date March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. We want to provide for supply two thousand nineteen from your company as the following conditions come to the net. One, the recorded document is currently provided to the plan board in two of the visits that were described on the plans. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much. I'd be very happy to stay one if you like. I mean, you should be.
Wouldn't you expect...
We've been, you meet, as, as, in fact, we, you know, we've been downtown, uh, the town a lot with the, and we, um, and we go out. We meet with the architectural team, we change architectural things. We meet with the team tomorrow also with Delwood with Zephan Drucker, and we'll with the digs and various things like that. I expect that finishing the, uh, to finish the plans in the meeting, uh, you can do a basically a guideline. It's probably decided April, then March, or March, I have better ideas tomorrow, but I think, yeah, no, no. Uh, it may, it may be, probably more April than March. It's just a, a pretty solid. But, uh, anything else? So it took us a while to get that stuff on, I think. But I do want to thank you guys for the long time. You spent a lot of time with us. We spent a lot of time with you. But, uh, but, uh, I must say that quite frankly, as I said, the end of the approval process, uh, it was a very constructive, uh, relationship. I think it was, the process improved. So ultimately, for the end, we had a really good project. So thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
So you want us to go with it?
We will, we will. I, I will, I'll actually, Scott, we can, after we finish tomorrow, uh, we'll have more of an idea, I think, a week or so sort of what the time is like. I'll call Cameron. I thought at that point, just putting down the contract. We're just gonna look at the, our guy from our team, and I'm actually gonna look it down. And with the introduction, we know we're putting down some of the Delwood, and also some on the architectural side of the right purposes. Have to meet people, so, and go in.
As your architect?
Which changes coal to group with new coal. Coal.
Coal.
Yeah. Uh, they're, they're, well, we got...
Are they, are they based on here?
I'm sorry, it's cube, not coal. Cube.
Are they based on the south or are they...
Yeah, they're based in Boston, in, in, in North Franklin Boston in indoor, but they work around the entire state and outside the state, too. Uh, you're about, have to call the office, people in the office. It's a, it's a logic. It's got me in, I could, I'd drive to it, it'd be much, much faster. Yeah.
That was painful.
It was, for all of us, so...
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, but I'm, I'm gonna bring them down and, uh, be last one, right?
Great.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
All right.
What, take me?
Um, let's take a dance.
All right, great, thank you very much.
They're gonna have a Mars, Mars grand.
All right, thank, oh, oh, sorry. Sorry. Thank you. Good night, now, thank you.
All right, is there anything else this evening?
Just about the tree that started with in bottle.
Yes, do you know that?
The what?
Is the tree that the intention was sitting on the in bottle that the front fell out of it.
Oh, it wasn't down yesterday?
Oh, it didn't reach it. No, it was dead center.
So it must have fallen out when we drove through yesterday? Or what?
It's been there for a while.
Oh, okay.
Who did it on the way out?
No. No, no, there's a piece, uh, over, uh, two-by-four in the road. I notice a giant tree.
It's a giant tree, sort of...
All right, I'll go back, I'll go back and peek. I mean, we drove through it the other day.
Like, you have to report that. You have to stop, you have two less stories.
Oh, okay.
So what's going on with the historic house?
I think, oh, oh. Um, the historic house is no longer. It's essentially...
Not quite, of course.
Well, it's, I don't know if I do, we have pictures. It's, um, essentially, they took it down. They, they cut up the top floor. They, and they're redoing it.
Yeah, because it was supposed to be moved to...
It was, it was.
That's what it looks like now.
That's what it looks like now. If that doesn't pass the straight base just... We're having a meeting with, um, Bryant, Massaw, Bob Holroth, and Doug Smith from the management on Tuesday evening to talk about it. I'm like, sure, I'll get that. All right, anything else? How entertaining builds lotion?
Circus.